All right, can I ask you all to join me for the pleasure, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands the nation in the business of liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, next month's meeting, we'll be back to our regular Tuesday schedule, October, although it's gonna be the Monday after, it's gonna be the Tuesday that's gonna feel like a Monday, 'cause it's after the Columbus Day holiday.
Right.
We do not have any minutes to approve at tonight's meeting, so, all right, let's get on with our agenda here. Item number one is a decision, appeal three six three zero, Luciano, Stephen Luciano, fifteen Prentice Drive, Hopewell Junction, requesting a two-foot variance for a six-foot fence to be located in front of the rear line of the dwelling pursuant to section one ninety-four dash ninety-nine of the zoning ordinance. Barbara, did you want to offer this one, 'cause I think you had an additional comment.
Um, the, this is for Stephen Lu-
Could you put the microphone closer to her?
This is for Stephen Luciano, fifteen Prentice Drive, Hopewell Junction, New York, one-two-five-three-three, appeal number three-six-three-zero. The applicant, Stephen Luciano, fifteen Prentice Drive, Hopewell Junction, New York, is requesting a two-foot variance for a six-foot high fence to be located in front of the rear line of the applicant's dwelling pursuant to section one ninety-four dash ninety-eight of the town zoning ordinance entitled Walls and Fences. The applicant's property is located in the R-one residential zoning district. Section one ninety-four dash ninety-eight of the zoning ordinance provides as follows: The yard requirements of this chapter should not be deemed to prohibit any necessary retaining wall nor to prohibit any fence or wall provided that in any residential district such as such fence or wall shall not exceed four feet in height in any required yard except where approved by the Board of Appeals. Walls and fences are also subject to the provisions of section one ninety-four dash ninety-nine. Decorative fences non-chain link may be erected within the rear yard of a lot in a residential district to a maximum height of six feet, provided they are installed two feet in from any lot line and with the finished side facing the adjoining properties. The applicant states in his application to this board that he seeks to improve, to approve the installation of six-foot fence in place of a four-foot fence on each side of the house. There were two reviews held on May fourteenth, twenty thirteen, and June eleventh, twenty thirteen, and one public hearing held on July ninth, twenty thirteen, on the ZBA application. The applicant stated that he installed the fences approximately three years ago and placed the fence on the left side of his house in front of the rear line of the dwelling. It was determined during the review that the fence on the right side of his house is approximate, appropriately at the rear line of the house. There is additionally a four-foot fence, uh, on the other-
The left side of the house.
On the left side of the house, as well as a six-foot, uh, fence, the front line of the dwelling. This led to the ZBA application as section one ninety-four dash ninety-eight provides, as recited above: Decorative fences non-chain link may be erected within the rear yard of a lot in a residential district to a maximum height of six feet, provided they are installed two feet in from any lot line and with the finished side facing the adjoining properties. The applicant stated in his ZBA application and at the public hearing, the desired privacy can't be achieved with the lower fence. He also stated at the public hearing that a six-foot fence hides two entry points into his house and his air conditioning equipment. However, this board does not see the need for a six-foot high fence, other than the applicant desires a six-foot high fence on each side of the house. For example, the house is probably at least one hundred feet from the road, and one cannot see into the rear yard of the property because of the extensive vegeta- vegetative screening on both sides of the applicant's property, and because the applicant has a white picket fence at the rear line of his house that also provides privacy. The board discussed with the applicant the potential of reversing the two fences so that the shorter white picket fence becomes the more visible fence, but the applicant was concerned with the expense associated with this change. The board also discussed the potential of planting some evergreens that could also provide privacy screening, but the applicant wished to pursue his appeal. Given the other options to maximize the screening, the board finds that there is no real reason to justify a six-foot high fence in or, in front of the rear line of the house on this property. A review of the five factors for granting area variances in New York are found in New York State Town Law, section two-six-seven dash B, and are determined or applied by this board to the instant ZBA application as follows. One, an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood by the granting of the area variance. If granted, this fence height variances, this fence height variances will set a terrible precedent for this neighborhood and all properties located in the R-one zoning districts in the town. The benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than an area variance. Here, the applicant does not require a six-foot high fence for daily living. The applicant can simply live on his property observing the town zoning ordinance limits for fence height, as his neighbors do every day. As previously noted, the applicant has multiple options to achieve the privacy desired. Three, the requested area variance is substantial. Going from a four-foot high fence you can see over to a six-foot high fence you cannot see over is very substantial for the property owners and the neighborhood. Four, the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical conditions in the neighborhood or zoning district. Once again, a six-foot high fence is impactful in a side yard versus a lesser four-foot high fence. The alleged difficulty was self-created, hence the applicant requesting a two-foot variance for a six-foot high fence, which the applicant located in front of the rear line of the applicant's dwelling. It should be noted that two neighbors expressed their being okay with the six-foot high fence, however, their two voices do not carry the day. The application of the zoning ordinance to the variance requested hand and the impact of the variance request on the neighborhood and/or zoning district are the paramount concerns of this board. Therefore, for all the reasons recited in this decision and order, this board hereby denies the applicant's request for a two-foot high variance for a six-foot high fence located in front of the rear line of the applicant's dwelling.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
And myself, aye. All right, first decision, good one. Item number two, appeal three-six-three-eight, Miyoshi, Edwin and Patricia Miyoshi, three-nineteen Blue Hill Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a thirty-four foot front line variance on Blue Hill Road and a forty foot front line variance on Shenandoah Road for a pre-existing house, which is on a corner lot. Ten-foot front line variance and an expansion of a non-conforming use for a proposed Echo cottage to be placed on their property, which is point six-two acre, in an R-one zone pursuant to section, I'm sorry, to local law number two of two thousand thirteen. Thank you. Three-nineteen Blue Hill Road, Edwin and Patricia Miyoshi, Hopewell Junction, New York, one-two-five-three-three. Otherwise, um, can't get three minutes.
Okay. Appeal number three-six-three-eight. The applicant, Edwin and Patricia Miyoshi, at three-nineteen Blue Hill Road in Hopewell Junction, New York, are requesting a thirty-four foot front line variance on Blue Hill Road and a forty foot front line, yeah, forty foot, front line variance on Shenandoah Road for a pre-existing house, which is on a corner lot. A ten-foot front line variance and expansion of non-conforming use for the proposed Echo cottage to be placed on their property, which is point six-two of an acre, in an R-one zone district, all pursuant to local law number two of two thousand and thirteen. This is the first applicant under the Town of East Fishkill's local law number two of two thousand and thirteen entitled Elderly Cottage Housing Opportunity, also known as Echo, as an accessory use in all residential zones. The local law was adopted March twenty-eighth, two thousand and thirteen, by local law, a permit is required to create an Echo unit, a detached mobile accessory dwelling for an elderly relative of the occupants of the principal dwelling on this property. The board has received and read the town's new local law number two and has become familiar with the seventeen conditions contained in local law number two. This application was the subject of a review on July ninth, two thousand and thirteen, and an extensive public hearing on August thirteenth, two thousand and thirteen. This board believes that the applicant's family and Echo unit proposed meets the seventeen conditions of the local law number two, however, this board has certain reservations on certain conditions, all as detailed, detailed. Condition one, the height of the unit will not exceed fifteen feet. Condition two, the floor area of the unit shall not exceed six hundred square feet. Uh, I think this one is four hundred and thirty square feet. Condition three, the design of the unit shall resemble a cottage, be neutral in appearance, and be tastefully screened and skirted. The applicants have agreed to these conditions for their Echo unit. Condition four, there will only be one unit on the lot. The setbacks are discussed below. Condition five, maximum lot coverage by the building shall not exceed twenty percent of all residential zones. Condition six, there will only be one occupant in this Echo unit. Condition seven, the property is in the R-one residential zoning district and must contain the minimum square footage required by the zoning district, one acre. This property consists of point six-two acres, the biggest concern of the board, and resolved below by the board. The resident, uh, condition eight, the resident of the Echo unit is in, is infirm, over sixty years old, and related by blood to the property owners. A physician's certification has been received by this board. Condition nine, the applicant must submit all the information required in condition, for issuance on the permit. Condition ten, the permit shall be reviewed annually by the zoning administrator. Condition eleven, the permit shall terminate upon the death of or permanent change of residence of the occupant of the Echo unit. Condition twelve, the applicant must offer proof of the consent of the adjoining property owners, or that they have been given twenty-five days' notice of the application. This is to be confirmed by the zoning administrator. Here, neighbors' letters were attached to the application, and several neighbors testified at the ZBA hearing. Condition thirteen, the applicant shall submit proof of the approval of the Dutchess County DOH prior to the issuance of the permit. The water septic and electrical utilities serving the Echo unit must be connected through the primary dwelling on the property. Condition fourteen, the recited building code requires, requirements are all to be met and/or shown to be the sat, at the satisfaction of the town building zone slash zoning department. Condition fifteen, there is a fifteen thousand performance bond is to be posted. Condition sixteen, local law number two specifically states, "The decision of the zoning administrator made hereunder may be appealed to the ZBA, which may vary any standard hearing." Condition seventeen, Echo units are allowed in R-one and greater residential districts only. Here, the applicants are in the R-one zoning district. Given all the documentation and testimony received by this applicant, application before and at the public hearings, and the review of the seventeen conditions in local law number two, this board hereby grants the following relief to the applicant's home, built in the eighteen eighties, and property, to allow an Echo cottage unit to be occupied by their elderly relative. Condition A, that, a thirty-four inch, a thirty-four foot front line variance on Blue Hill Road, a forty foot front line variance on Shenandoah Road, for a prior to zoning pre-existing house which, house which is located on a corner lot, and a ten-foot front line variance and an expansion of the non-conforming use for the proposed Echo unit to be placed on the point six-two of an acre lot. Pursuant to the board's discussion on the review date and at the public hearing, the board believes that the applicant herein and the elderly relative are exactly the family situation contemplated by the Echo unit legislation, local law number two of two thousand and thirteen. Their relative has lived in East Fishkill for decades and will benefit by the care given by her family members, and by the remaining in the town that she has lived in for decades. In addition, she will not be cramped in the principal house, and she will have her own living space. The proposed location of the Echo unit will not be visible from any of the adjoining neighbors because of the dense vegetation and screening on the neighboring properties. In addition, all the designed features recited in the seventeen conditions, uh, conditions in local law number two are being observed by the applicant, skirting the unit, nicely landscaping the unit, use of similar colors to the house for the color of the unit, and reducing the view of the unit as much as possible from the road, et cetera. The one reservation this board has with the applicant's application is placing the Echo unit on less than one acre, here, point six-two of an acre. This board believes in, in every other respect that it is worthy of the application, except for this one variance. As a result, the board is referring this DNO to, to the legislative body of the Town of East Fishkill, the Town Board, with the request that the Town Board amend local law number two, condition seventeen, to require the lot must contain the minimum square footage required by the zoning district, or, for example, eighty percent of the square footage. The forecalling constitutes the decision and order of this board, and this is a type-two action under secret, no further compliance is required.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah. Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries. All right, decision number three, appeal three-six-four-two, the Goddard School, Manani Inc., representing the Goddard School, fifty Van Wyck Lane, Wapenters Falls, is requesting a seven-square-foot variance for a proposed, proposed seven-point-seven-five-square-foot addition to the already existing seventeen-square-foot sign pursuant to section one fifty-four of the zoning ordinance.
Manani Inc. doing business as a Goddard School, fifty Van Wyck Lane, Wapenters Falls, New York. The applicant herein, Manani Inc., EBA, Goddard School, is applying to the ZBA for a seven-square-foot variance for a proposed seven-point-seven-five-square-foot addition to the existing seventeen-square-foot sign pursuant to section one fifty-three of the town's ordinance. The property in question is located in the I-three zoning district and is owned by Van Wyck Square LLC, which filed an authorization for its tenant, Manani Inc., to make this application to the town ZBA for an area variance for a proposed modification to the existing freestanding sign for a changeable letter board to be attached to the existing freestanding sign. As existed, in, as indicated in a memo from the town building department dated June twenty-fourth, two thousand and thirteen, to the ZBA, the Goddard School is entitled to an eighty-square-foot of signage total on the property. This includes building and freestanding signs. The building sign is sixty-one-point-eight-three square feet, and the existing freestanding sign is seventeen square feet, for a total of seventy-eight-point-eight-three square feet of total signage on the property. The board carefully reviewed and studied two submissions from the applicant. First, freestanding sketch sign revised February twentieth, two thousand and thirteen by Select Sign Matthews, NC, and two, front elevation building sign sketch revised October seventh, two thousand and twelve by Select Sign Knoxville, Tennessee. The board reviewed the history of the signs placed on the property. Apparently, there was some confusion in discussions between the applicant and the property owner. This board underscored that the building department approved the freestanding sign and not the planning board, which board only approved the location of the freestanding sign on the property. The ZBA focused on the various options presented to the applicant by the proposed freestanding sign. Several board members drove by the existing freestanding sign or indicated they drove by the property on a regular basis. The board looked at the proposed freestanding sign in three components. First, the top component reciting the Goddard School for Early Childhood Development. Second, the middle component with a dark blue background reciting Goddard's telephone number and website address. And third, the lower component reciting, quote, "four-inch changeable copy," close quote, for various messages or announcements to be displayed in this portion of the freestanding sign. Several conclusions are readily apparent to the ZBA as discussed during the review on July ninth, two thousand and thirteen, and the public hearing on August thirteenth, two thousand and thirteen. One, if proposed, if built as proposed, the lower portion of the freestanding sign would be too low and perhaps be hidden from sight by snow or grass during a portion of the year. Two, the dark blue area of the middle portion of the freestanding sign is difficult to read. Three, the application has options other than seeking the requested variance. A, the applicant can place temporary signs to announce certain school events, open houses, et cetera, within the parameters of the town zoning ordinance, thereby eliminating the four-inch changeable copy portion of the sign. B, the applicant can add the telephone number to the top portion of the sign, thereby eliminating the middle portion of the sign, the difficult-to-read dark blue background. Finally, a review of New York State Town Law two-sixty-seven dash B, and the five factors governing the granting of area variances, reveal the following to the board. So, division two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than the area variance. Here, the applicant has many alternatives to pursue, as detailed above, and as discussed in the review and public hearing, other than obtaining an area variance. Subdivision five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. Here, the applicant could have remained within the total signage square footage allowed for the building sign and freestanding sign. It is the applicant who is proposing to exceed the total square footage allowed, and thus requires this variance. Therefore, for all the reasons recited in this decision and order, this board hereby denies the applicant's request for a seven-square-foot variance for a proposed seven-point-seven-five-square-foot addition to the already existing seventeen-square-foot sign pursuant to section one fifty-three of the zoning ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you. All right, Mr. Pien?
All right, so, at this point, we have one public hearing, and then we have three reviews. Um, for you, the information for those of you who aren't here, item number seven has been pulled, um, they've requested specifically to be on next month's agenda. So, for the public hearing, um, any neighbor who's interested in speaking is certainly welcome to, but for the reviews, there'll be no, no public hearing tonight, we'll do them at the appropriately scheduled time. So, the first public, or the, the public hearing this evening, item number four, appeal three-six-four-five, Carolyn, Mary Ann Carolyn, eleven Elk Road, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a twenty-five-foot front line variance for a proposed twenty-four-foot by twenty-four-foot attached garage, and a five-foot front line variance for a proposed, proposed portico, as well as the pre-existing non-conforming dwelling pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance.
Correct.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Thank you.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
All right, so, we did discuss, you have a, a lot that's the standard size for Worley Homes, and you are looking to just add a garage-
To replace the existing porch.
Mm-hmm. Um, so, this board did a review of it, um, we didn't find any significant issue with it, and we figured it was time to hear from your neighbors. So, any questions or comments from board members?
Um, I actually visited your, I did a site review, and, and I looked at other neighbors. Um, if you, if you put the garage and everything else, it'll be way too close to the road compared to any of the neighbors in the Worley Home Development. Um, so, I mean, I just, I, I didn't do a measurement, but I eyeballed it. So, the extension, because you are, you're already pretty close to the road right now because you have a short driveway, and then you have the, the property. So, this extension is going to really be substantial.
Um, it's going to replace the porch, so, it's got-
Yeah, but again, you're, you're going to be extending it further out from what, from the location.
Right, so, it, um, let's see what the, um, so, it said that it was going to be twenty-four feet then from the road.
Yeah.
And right now, your porch is?
Say thirty-four.
Yeah, so it's-
So, is it, it's ten feet.
But you've got the porch, and then you've got the stairs coming off the front of the porch, so it's actually less than-
Yeah.
If you factor in the stairs, it's going to be just a little bit more beyond where the stairs are. That's probably six feet and a four feet.
Mm-hmm.
So, you're concerned that-
It's, it's a little too close to the, I mean, once it's all done, I mean, it's going to be, it's, I mean, it, unfortunately, you don't have much space, so, um, but just coming from the road, um, to the new location, you'll be closer than most of your neighbors, but anyway, I'd like to hear from the other neighbors also.
Twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-four is a standard size for a garage, but it is a double garage. So, I guess the, the one question is-
Well, you can make it narrower, but you can't-
You can't shrink the twenty-four feet, though, coming out front, because the car length is a car length, so.
By the time you put up the walls and stuff, or inside, you're less than twenty-four feet.
Right.
And most cars, I mean, they, they approach twenty feet, so.
And, and shrinking it to a single garage isn't going to achieve the change, right, isn't going to achieve the-
I mean, is there any way to move it back a little bit, or?
Not without putting it in the front of the house, closer to the front of the, of the lot, on Elk Road.
Right.
She's got a corner house. So, yeah.
I was trying to find another neighbor that was closer than you, and I, you know, again, really close to the road, and I didn't find any, I mean, it was, they were close, but, um, once you put the structure there-
There's some others in the back that are closer.
Yeah, I went in the back, I, I-
And those, some of them are.
I know, but-
What's this there?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I didn't go in that, I, well, it-
Are those cars? What's, what's, what's a couple lots down from the corner from you? Is there a business there or something, or is it? It's like a garage right there, what is, is that just a dance?
Yeah, it is. It looks like it's a garage or a shed, with parts parked behind it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, again, and they will, um, if you go further towards the end, you will see some property closer to the, to the road, but, um-
I mean, the front of her house faces Elk Road, so it's not, like, the, the front is the real visible, that, that's not changing. So, the look on Elk Road is not changing, it's just that the, the front of the garage on, on Beaver is-
She has no other place to put a garage on.
I wish I could pick it up and just move it.
Move it.
Right, right.
Pick up your house, yes.
I would love to.
All right, let's, let's see if there's any neighbors here. Are there, are there any neighbors to speak for or against Mary Carolyn, eleven Elk Road, requesting a twenty-five-foot front line variance for a proposed twenty-four-foot by twenty-four-foot garage, and a five-foot front line variance for a proposed portico, as well as a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling?
Seeing none, so we have a motion to close the public hearing.
Just for a, a question, I mean, in that zone, instead of a corner lot, that was a regular lot, what would the setback be for the sideline, twenty-five feet?
We said fifty, I believe.
Well, it is, but it's a front line, it's-
Yeah, unless, I'm asking a different question, so, I mean, she, if that was actually a sideline, she wouldn't be asking for much of a variance at all.
Right.
And she really has no other place to, I mean, she either has a, a garage there or no garage at all on that piece of property. So, I just want to make that clear on the record.
Yep.
Okay, so now, I would make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Close the public hearing. All right, and there is a resolution here.
Yeah, there's a resolution.
Appeal number thirty-six, forty-seven, applicant-
Thirty-six, forty-five.
Thirty-six, forty-seven.
No, it's, she's right.
You're right, okay, sorry.
Okay, so, appeal number thirty-six, forty-five.
Yeah, thank you.
He knows her appeals.
Okay, yeah, I'm sure he wrote a appeal, okay.
What, was I getting a pool? Oh, okay.
You're getting a beautiful pool.
Appeal thirty-six, forty-five, applicant-
Or maybe not.
Carolyn, uh, is requesting a twenty-five-foot front line variance for a proposed twenty-four feet by twenty-four feet attached garage, and a five-foot front line variance for a proposed front portico, as well as, uh, the pre-existing non-conforming dwellings pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance. Location of the property is eleven Elk Road, Hopewell Junction. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Assam, where the applicant is applied to the zoning board for a twenty-five-foot front line variance for a proposed twenty-four foot by twenty-four foot attached garage, and a five-foot front line variance for a proposed front portico, as well as the pre-existing non-conforming dwelling pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance, whereas this action is a type-two action under secret, and no further action is required, and where its legal notice was published in the Southern Districts News on August twenty-eighth, twenty thirteen, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on September ninth, twenty thirteen, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the grounding of their variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be detrimental to the community, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means as the applicant's driveway is located on that side of the house, and it is a corner lot, and the existing dwelling was built prior to zoning, therefore necessitating the need for a five-foot front line variance for the dwelling. The variance requested is not substantial, the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood, uh, nor the- Now therefore, it is resolved that the zoning board of appeal hereby approves the request made by Mary M. Carolyn, eleven Elk Road, Hopel Junction, who is requesting a twenty-five-foot front line variance for a proposed twenty-four foot by twenty-four foot attached garage as well as a five-foot front line variance for the proposed front portico and the pre-existing non-conforming dwelling pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance. Be it further resolved that within five business days adoption of this resolution, the chair or the duly authorized member of the zoning board should cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carried.
Thank you very much.
All right. Pan, thank you. All right, so now we are on to reviews. There's no more public hearings for this evening, so. The first review, number five, Appeal three six four zero Spelter, Shawn Spelter, nineteen Canterbury Court, Hopel Junction requesting a fifteen-foot sideline variance for a proposed in-ground pool pursuant to section one ninety-four dash ninety-five of the zoning ordinance. Good evening. So when we, this is now our third review. When we last met, we did ask you to consider what your other possibilities were.
Yes, we have done.
Okay, so we have a new map here. Could take us through it?
Sure. Um, we had a meeting server about that one.
If you have an extra copy, could you give it to Mary, Mary's an alternate member over there and this way both Marys can actually look at it.
We have a trial court that's out and we've done two things. We made it to the mall.
Okay.
We've changed the organic look, which is the request of the homeowner. This is what they would like to do. And we've put the stairs inside the pool and we have reduced our request from fifteen to ten feet as a variance. We can't get any closer to the septic. It's just the way it is. And those sinkholes, no one in this room would get closer. And I've been in a pool since I was a kid. There's, we need to put the pool there. That's really what it comes down to.
So tell us the dimensions of this pool now.
Uh, what is the exact now?
Um, I believe if you take a rule into it, it's around twenty-eight feet.
Twenty-eight feet each direction?
Wide, twenty-eight feet wide.
So that's where it was thirty feet before, or is that where it was forty?
It's a little, yeah, no, it was.
I think it was closer to thirty-six, wasn't it?
All right, folks, I need, I need a, what is the measurement of this pool?
Well.
Last time we thought it was twenty-six.
The.
We were told it was thirty by forty.
Well, I think when you measure it or something. I don't have the CAD with me.
Okay.
But when we were here the last time, we had talked about using the same shape but making it smaller, and that's really how we're going to do it.
Okay, well.
It's going to be designed by manufacturers to make sure that we're ten feet off, stay with the same shape. But we didn't really want to have, pay another fee to, I had stated that, that he would cost another fee. So I think it was Mr. Meyer that said, just tell us what the distance is going to be, and we're going to be ten feet off.
Okay, but again, your options, we also discussed that you did have the option of a standard size pool of twenty by forty, twenty-four by forty-four, something like that.
Absolutely.
Which would fit without a variance. So that's why, that's why I'm asking the question.
That is true.
Or might fit, might require only a two-foot variance if you're now saying this is twenty-eight feet. So if you drop it to twenty, then you require a two-foot variance instead of the ten feet you need now. And that's what I'm just trying to get at. What are, what are the options? Are there alternatives?
That is not.
We have a full picture here.
We really want to stay with an organic look.
Okay.
That is kind of like my kind of thing.
Okay, so we also talked about, are we adding any screening? Is there going to be fencing?
The fence is on, is on there.
Is there a patio? Okay, so you, now we added a fence at the rear line of the house.
No, we also did the one, yeah, so from the road, that was one of the concerns.
Right, because I told you it was very, very visible, yeah, Canterbury.
You have it right on the property line?
It's four foot.
Yeah, it's four foot.
Four feet, so you can do it.
It has to be two feet in.
Six foot.
Six foot.
That's, that's okay. That one, that one works. But how about, so is there a patio on the neighbor's side around the pool?
Yes.
There's a walkway around the pool.
Tiny walkway, I think it shows.
Shows it on the.
Yeah, it shows the tiny one and there's the fence line.
Okay, this, this second shape is the patio.
And the fence.
Patio requires fifteen foot.
Yep.
So this, so the fence is the same shape or the fence is the X line that's more squared off around?
The more squared off.
Squared off.
Okay.
And we would need a four-foot variance for the, for the walkway based on how it's laid out there.
How wide is the walkway?
Four feet.
Patio requires fifteen foot setback. They're proposing eleven, so they need a variance for that also.
Move it over another five feet.
We need four feet then, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So what's the variance you're saying you need for the pool itself?
Ten feet.
Ten feet and four for the walkway.
They're proposing a fifteen foot offset.
So you need fourteen feet then, a fourteen-foot variance for the pool. If you need four feet for the walkway to get to the fifteen feet, then you need another ten feet. Oh, I guess the ten feet is a.
It's awkward, you need ten foot for the pool.
The patio doesn't have as much a setback. Is that what you're asking?
Right, so, but you need for, if the, so if the patio requires a four-foot setback, variance for the setback.
Yeah, and ten foot for the pool.
But the pool itself requires another ten feet.
No, because the patio is only four feet from the.
It doesn't have the same setback as.
Yeah, you got to use, it's a reverse math.
You're confusing me, I guess.
You got eleven feet here.
You know what I said, I guess.
And then four feet there, that gives you fifteen.
Right.
Plus ten, it's going to be twenty-five.
Yeah, that, okay, that's where I'm at.
Yeah, no, no, you're going the wrong way, though.
I was thinking, I was thinking in a reverse way, though.
Yeah. It's not the same variance.
Four for the patio and ten for the pool.
Yeah.
Okay.
And are you going to put landscaping on both sides of the fence, one side?
I still say and go back ten feet and over five. No variance is required.
Well, I think at this point, this is what he's offering.
I know, I'm just saying.
I agree with you. I think that's, if he is, this is his request. We, I think we pursued other options. I think let's schedule it for a public hearing and see what happens. Are we agreeing this?
I agree.
All right, so a motion to advertise?
Go ahead.
Can I say something second? On favor? All right, we'll see you next month.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a plan, sir?
Yes.
Do you have the next one? Um, we'll go to the public hearing. I don't know if we'll be able to make a decision.
You also have to advertise.
You guys speak, yeah.
Make sure that the sign is out there.
In ink that doesn't wash off.
The runtable short. Thank you.
All right, item number six, Appeal three six four six Kelly, Albert and Joanne Kelly, thirty-nine Shag Bark Lane, Hopel Junction requesting a twelve-foot sideline variance for an existing twelve-foot by eighteen-foot shed pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance. Good evening. All right, my understanding is that you guys are getting ready to sell your home and so you're trying to get your house into.
Board, yeah.
And, and that you did pull out a permit to put your shed in, but that somehow it did not get placed in the, in the place that you originally applied for.
Right.
And so ultimately, you have a shed. It's in, it's been installed. I guess it's been there for a while. So the building department went out to do a final inspection and it was determined that it wasn't exactly installed where it was expected to. And so you need this variance.
Yeah.
So can you tell us, what's the foundation of the shed? Is this shed movable? I mean, obviously, there was an original location that was picked. Does it have a concrete foundation? What is the foundation doing?
No, there's no foundation.
So.
It could be moved.
It can be moved.
Yeah, it can be.
Okay, so.
So what's the why's and wherefore is that it didn't go where you planned originally?
Uh, we originally put it, we originally did put it where we were supposed to put it.
Oh, okay.
And it just stood out like a sore thumb.
It was too close to the house.
So then we decided to move it back away.
Back away and make it more aesthetic and now we don't like where you put it.
Yeah, now, and now it's too close to the side.
Well, I guess the problem is that when you put it in, you never quite closed out the permit.
Right.
So.
We didn't realize we actually had.
Yeah, we didn't know.
So when the building department came out to see it, it had changed locations. Well, it has a nice little fountain, yeah, steps to it and a nice little foundation.
It actually looks very nice where it is. I mean, it's right in with the trees, it's setback, it's not right out in the middle of the lawn.
Yeah, we did a rock wall in front of it.
Is, is, yeah, I see. It's very, very nice. Is it, um, is it visible from the driveway, from the roadway?
I took a picture of this.
Oh, I mean, we have this in the application. Is that?
Oh, yeah, that's the picture.
I'm sure you can see it, but it's not like you're driving down the road. You're just going, oh my God, look at that. It's.
Yeah, it's pretty subtle.
Mary tastefully done.
It's like Mary's arguing for you.
My audition CEO, I received the.
We need her.
Based on that, I make a motion to advertise.
Call in favor. We'll see you next month.
Is that, so I come back next month and that's October?
You'll see Pam. She'll give you the instructions because you have to put out a sign so that your neighbors know what you're doing and the letters will go out to your neighbors.
Please, permanent, permanent.
And then, yes, we'll see you guys back here in October, okay? And our last item of the evening, item number eight, because number seven is pushed, postponed till October, so item number eight, Appeal three six four eight Mustakis.
Well, she did.
George Mustakis of East Fishville Provisions is requesting a three-foot sideline variance for a proposed ten-foot by forty-foot storage container to be located on the western side of the building at five sixty-seven Bald Oak Bowl Road, which is a pre-existing non-conforming use, Hopel Junction. What? What?
Soon don't.
I think that, I think that got moved pursuant to section one ninety-four dash seventeen of the zoning ordinance.
That whole pool turned, threw her off a little bit.
I just think a little differently, that's all. All right, so my understanding, and I certainly appreciate, you know, the way you've written your application, East Fishville Provisions provides meals and sandwiches and all the rest of it to all the emergency workers when we have blackouts, when there are events going on. And so one of the things that the applicant has asked for is that he be able to put a storage shed on his property to be able to store equipment that you need so that at the time, including emergency generators. So at the time that when there is a disaster or something that's going on, blackout, particularly for an extended period of time, and we've got Central Hudson and other workers here who are days on end that require additional meals, he has the ability to be able to set up very, very quickly to be able to handle and provide the meals for these folks. This is a pre-existing non-conforming use, but the property is very well maintained. It's, you know, so I think, I think you're a good neighbor and over there. I haven't heard of any complaints.
We try.
I, I know you certainly do. You certainly are a good neighbor to the town, that's for sure. So the issue really is that you are looking to put this on the side where that is against your, your property residential neighbors.
Correct.
And so one of the things, I guess, my only question, well, I do have a couple of questions here. It appears that you're looking to put this in the front of the rear line of the building, so it's really running along the side of the building.
Yes. Along parallel, correct.
Why is, why are, is this?
Close to the service. The service comes in there, so to run the generator and the gas.
Oh, got it, okay. But why, why are you not looking to do a permanent addition to the building as opposed to, is there a storage container or something that you already have in mind?
Yeah, it's a self-contained unit. It's airtight, it's fireproof, so it's just, would probably be more structure than us building a structure.
Okay.
So the generators would be running in, in the unit?
Excuse me?
Would the generate, the generators would run in the unit?
It would only run when needed. And it's just like these Generex where they would run periodically just to maintain themselves.
Right, just to make sure they're still functioning.
Do you have, are they loud?
No. No, it has a muffler. It's indoor unit meant for inside office buildings. It actually runs inside the actual building itself.
And so you're requesting ten foot by forty feet, which is, that is pretty significant. Is it, again, is that the size of the side of the building? What, what's the, what's the logic of this?
The logic is the house, house, you know, water, house the, the equipment to run the building.
Okay.
If we're going to run twenty-four hours, I'm going to need a place to hide, so, no, we'll have, we'll. We'll also.
This is not a residential use.
It's also to store some equipment, like some of our catering needs. We have many grills, we have tents.
Okay.
And we just beat them up, taking them up and down the stairs.
Okay, yes, you did write something about that you were no longer going to be able to use the second floor. What, what's the use of the second floor?
Second floor is never used. It's just an office space for us. It's not, it's just storage, it's dry good, paper good. It's not, no, 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 no.
There's no anticipated second use of that, okay.
Again, it's another place where I hide, but no one knows.
That's an office.
Super tower.
Now we know, obviously.
Not going in there, okay? That's no problem. Okay, I don't have any other issues. Those were, those were really my questions. Any other questions for board members?
Is it possible to push it further back or someplace because I, you know, again, I do understand there's lines coming in there, but it's kind of a huge building and it's next to the, I mean, have you looked at other?
Yeah, we did look at other options, but the, the, the gas lines run there, the, the service runs there, so that longer run. You'd be going direct into that room. Yes.
And honestly, as you drive by there, because I did make it a point to drive by there the other day, there really is a lot of screening there.
You're kind of blinking, you don't even notice.
Yeah, you really, I highly doubt you'll even notice. You'll have to know that it's there to go looking for it, so I think it will blend in.
And I did speak to the neighbors about, especially Gary next door to us, so, but his, I didn't speak to him personally, but his wife's not opposed to it at all.
You're, you're not taking any of existing trees out, they're staying?
Everything will stay. I have to trim up some branches here and there just to, but there's already, it's not on this, but there's an evergreen on the corner of the building and a little bit more in the middle of the section. You can't see on this, it's not showing. Which would cover it up a little bit more. Which kind of has already grown to the point where you, it's getting tighter and tighter to mow through there, so within another few years, it won't even be visible.
Right.
And although the building's long, this whole shed's long, you can't make it any narrower. And it's on the side, ten feet.
Oh, yeah, no, the ten foot.
Anything less than ten, it's not punctual, so.
The ten foot wasn't, it was the forty feet that was questioning.
Yeah, but that doesn't make much difference as far as.
Where's the doorway? Is it on the back?
Door's on the back.
On the ten-foot side or on the forty-foot side?
It's the ten-foot side.
Wow.
And that's going to go back. You got your fence storage area back there, too. That'll be just through that, which is important, right?
That's going to be the only doorway?
No, there'll be another door we'll put so we can make access to the side.
To the building?
Yes.
And is there lighting in there?
Uh, no, there is no lighting in there.
Is there lighting on the outside of it?
Yes.
Any lights, any lights that would be shining on the neighbors?
Yeah, no lights are shining on the neighbors now.
No light leaves your property?
Just whatever our exit light is and it doesn't leave the property.
Okay. This is required? Planning board? Site planning? It does. Did the planning board refer them to us?
Not yet, no. Because it came a different.
Do, should this be a coordinated review?
Yeah, absolutely, should we? Because the planning board identified something we have to deal with.
But, but they didn't come to us from the planning board?
No.
No, 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 but we still should do a coordinated review. If we proceed with their planning board application, planning board moves something, shifts something, it could affect a variance.
But because this is site plan, it's pla, sorry, the planning board should be lead agency, right?
Probably, probably.
So do we hold off doing a public, do we hold up on a public hearing?
We could, we could schedule a public hearing, but tell them to get going with the other public hearing also. We wouldn't want to close one before the both are ready to close.
Has anybody told you you have to do an application to the planning board?
No.
You should.
It's not a.
Why would that be?
It's not a permanent structure. Is that why?
Yeah.
They do the promise.
No, foundation shouldn't.
No, it's a closed.
Yeah.
It's a closed unit.
Storage unit with a built-in generator, which.
How is it, how is it buttoned up to the building itself?
Wouldn't be buttoned up to the building.
Just, just, just juxtaposed, just juxtaposed.
It's just, it's a freestanding. It's not against the billing at all.
Have you guys made a determination on the area that has come to you guys yet?
We haven't seen it other than this application.
Why don't we do two things? Why don't we, why don't we set a public hearing for this board and maybe refer back to staff to report on whether planning board application is triggered?
That's fine.
That's fine. Yeah, I have no problem with that. I just, I don't want to hold them up.
No, they shouldn't be.
This is season where, you know, trees could be coming down.
'Tis the season.
I know, well, hurricane season's, knock on wood.
Fat Central Hudson people work a little faster in our area, too, so.
Yeah, the prediction's far off, thank goodness.
Yeah, all right, so, so do I have a motion to advertise for October and then let's see in the meantime if there's anything else you need to do? Maybe the fact that it's not a permanent structure, we don't.